... Most of the years.
Please rise, you're one man of the religions.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Meeting of the Wahoo City Council, Tuesday, March eleventh, seven o'clock P M. This meeting is actually posted on the wall. Call the meeting to order and go home.
Stuart Cretchen.
Here.
Shane Sweet.
Here.
Ryan Ideas.
Here.
Chris Rangle.
Here.
Patrick Nagle.
Here.
Paul Weller.
Okay, no proclamations. Uh, anyone in the audience that wants to speak to something that's not on the agenda, uh, please come forward. Ryan, you want to?
Yep.
Fine.
Um, I was just kinda curious, uh, it's been the driest fall, winter, if we're ever gonna get going on this project or not? Cause it's getting, beginning to be the rainy season again. We haven't had a letter, no letters. We keep being promised letters all the time, nothing.
It's been a week.
So, you know, they keep telling me a week here, a week there, you know, it's getting kinda, we need to do something. And then that lot that's for sale now, what it, what's, what's the city gonna say about if they, uh, whoever buys that brings dirt in there? You know, that's, you know, that's not gonna be a good situation either, cause then that's just gonna divert the water over. And I did talk, we've, we've been starting to talk to the lawyer now about all this. And, you know, he did say that if it did, if they haul dirt in that area and diverted the water over, you can't do that. So, whoever buys that lot, I hope the, you know, Travis gets on and says that you can't haul dirt in there or divert the water over.
Well, they have to get some, I mean, they can't change the flow of water, right? They have to get some sort of approval when they change.
Well, the only two times you need approval from the city would be one subdivision process. But I wouldn't imagine unless they're carving and ended lots, it would fall under the subdivisions process. Cause that would require you to do a drainage study and evaluation alike if you're gonna go through subdivision. But if I'm gonna put a house on a lot, and I'm gonna put a one commercial structure in a lot, I don't have to do a drainage study in order to be able to implement. That's true of everybody. So, if that's the user, that in and of itself wouldn't require it. Now, the only other time the city gets involved in elevations would be if there's, and I don't think there is, but if that area, or any portion of it is in the floodway.
Sure.
Because then what they require a floodway development from it as part of that process, they need an engineer to certify that the drainage study, based on the analysis, isn't gonna cause a compromise, right? Um, but I, I'd have to look, but I don't think that lot is in any flood, regulated floodway, if it required that. So, I don't believe that, as I sit here today, technically they would have to go through the city to, to approve bringing in dirt to do in something.
Cause Travis said he was gonna talk to you about that.
Cause those are really the kind of ways we can stop somebody from doing something like that. Now, a private citizen always has the right to say, you're pushing water onto me, I can civilly sue you.
Sure.
Get an injunction, stop that act of life. That's usually where, where a political body can't do it. That's your next option is the private citizen that's impacted by doing it. And again, I'm, this is top of my head, so I speculate, but.
So, I mean, what, what's kind of the plan? What's the next, you know? I mean, it's been this dry, we should've been able to dig that ditch in November, December, it was so nice. There it is, March, we talked about this, how long ago?
December tenth meeting, we were promised a letter at the end of that week.
Well, you are aware of the, the flags out there, it's been measuring.
We've had, we've had flags out there since last summer.
Yeah. And the shooter put it out there.
Yeah.
I guess I would just say, I know that there has been a lot of data collection done by the street department and based on their findings, based on the stuff that the study came back from J E O. And I'm not, this is just a confirmation of that work. There is not, we could go out there and move dirt around, but we are not going to accomplish anything. Because the sanitary sewer line that lies in there has, the very south end of that has to have at least three foot of cover. And if you take the elevation of that point and you line it up with the elevation of where the drainage wa, that, that storm, like sanitary sewer is a straight line, right? And so, on the west side of it, the ditch could be deeper, but that line, that drainage way has to cross that lines, which means that you're left with that base elevation that you have to have at the bottom of the sanitary sewer. Unless there is, other than carving that, if you're suggesting grading out and carving out the ditch, I think there's cleanup work could be done, but it's not something that's going to.
So, what about upstream?
What about upstream?
Like J E, J E O doing something there?
Yes.
Making a bigger pond to hold back the water so that it runs through there so fast? You know, there's multiple things we could do there. You know, we've been talking about this for how long? And nothing's getting done at all, at all, not even attempting it, you know? And J E O.
The work that J E O's that is doing is work that's associated with that lot, with the drainage study that was approved, and they're installing the sanitary sewer in that location.
So, I was gonna bring that up also, since J E O is already doing construction, isn't there supposed to be a silk fence along there? Isn't that a big fine if you don't have a silk fence along there to hold back that water? So, to hold back all that dirt that they got piled up in the bottom down there?
You know, maybe a swift permit, that's not through the city, but there may be a swift permit that's.
Yeah, but the city should be watching that, you know? To me, that, that should be a fine, not J E O's.
It's only required when you disturb an acre, an acre of ground or more.
They've got four or five big piles of dirt down inside there. And if it rains and it floods that, where else, where's all that dirt gonna go? It's gonna fill in everything that we even have a little bit of. So, I, I mean, all I'm asking, guys, let's, let's get this handled and let's get it done. I mean, I'm not asking for much of anything but this, you know? And it's gonna start raining again, everybody knows it's gonna start raining. We're gonna be right back in here and talking about this again. Or else we might have to get lawyers involved, maybe that's, you know, I don't know, you know? We've been talking about, like, how long have we been talking about this? You know, and, and you guys all agreed that we were going to attempt to do something, and nothing's been done.
The studies have been done.
The studies have been done, but nothing else. We talked about digging dirt, and nothing's been done.
She pointed out though, the, the study, we got a draft.
We can do studies, we can do studies and studies and studies. Let's, let's do some actual work.
We got some estimates on how it picks it from the south end and lowering the sewer line. Um, nobody, private individual for the city can afford to do that, over a million dollars, to change that whole system. So, that's not an answer. And you have to have, I believe it's three foot coverage, and that's about where the line is right now. Uh, so, you can't, I didn't get across that sewer line.
So, let's look upstream. Let's look up, you know, maybe put up a dike across there and pond it up and let it out slowly through there. You know? Why can't we do that? Raise that walkway there. You know, there's multiple other things that wouldn't take a billion dollars to fix. And we haven't seen any letters out either.
I, I did send a letter with the draft easement language.
I didn't receive it.
Yeah, it was by email, and you acknowledged it received it.
Oh, of email, there was a letter to come, that was after the December tenth meeting.
Which I think if you look on the date, I think that that was what was accepted. I'd have to go back and double check. I don't remember promising the letter other than information about the easement, which I did send out. So, if there's something that I have missed, I will verify that and get you. It's a frustrating situation for everyone, because I don't think, generally speaking, the city doesn't want to not help you, but there's nothing that can be done, except if, if we go in there and we move some dirt around, and like you're saying, it's not going to solve the problem. If you're building the dike, I don't, that's not something that we've ever evaluated upstream. I don't even know whether that's something we wanna spend any more money on, so.
Well, watching the dirt work happen at that new J E O subdivision is getting scary looking, cause it's doing exactly what we were, it's looking, again, not in the air, but it's.
And I, I assure you tomorrow morning, we will have a conversation with J E O about that, cause I understand that.
That's exactly what we were promised wasn't gonna happen, and it's down. I mean, don't have to be an engineer to see where that water's running to. In all their plans that they presented, so it's just adding.
I don't know, all we're asking is, look at, look at different options and what we can do. What we can do. Cause it's only gonna get worse. Thank you.
Okay.
Is there anything to look forward to, like what the next step is, or are we just at a standstill yet again?
Not all at once.
Well, I think where we are, this is again, just my immediate reaction, just J E O did a study, J E O determined option A or option B. City went with option A. Your response, obviously, is you don't think option A is sufficient in and of itself, there needs to be more. City said, okay, we'll look at whether a better way to channel along that utility line, that water. What I'm hearing is city saying, can't really create a true channel, because we're fixed at the southern end on the elevation. So, we could channel to, to that point, but it's gonna then be a rise, and then there's gonna, the water's gonna back up, the same as it would, is that basically the assessment, right? And so, it doesn't sound like that's a very viable option, and at least as of present, there's no other options on the table.
Okay.
I don't, don't, not suggesting certainly that there'll never be another option, but I don't think there is another option right now, at least on the take. Is that fair, fair assessment?
Do we need to see the data that we've collected to prove where we're at, or, I mean, we could maybe have a, uh, a totally special meeting, a meeting dedicated to resolving at least the elevations and, um, and what we can't do?
You gotta reach some sort of resolution, whatever meeting that might take would be amazing.
Yeah, you're just saying to prove that you can't channel it and that option doesn't work, that's what you're saying here, right? So, that doesn't necessarily give the, okay, now what, right?
What the state department did this, uh, winter, and we located every utility, utility line from the far south end all the way to the north. We started in the north and we potholed and we located every single utility line from, from the sanitary to communication to gas, water, and electric.
Before Christmas, even.
Yeah, we located everything. We dug down, we found all the depths, cause the ground wasn't frozen. What we found out was that the far south sanitary line crosses and goes up the hill. So, whatever we dig has to go across that sanitary line. That sanitary line is the biggest problem in the study, that's costing one point two million dollars to be able to cross that line. So, that sanitary line needs to be encased and supported, because if that ever broke, that would go into the creek and cause a major problem in town.
And insulated.
When we looked at that, we looked at every single depth and what we could, what, what we can move, what we couldn't move, and everything comes back to that sanitary line and tells us, you can't do anything because of that line. So, that line needs to be encased. Um, lowering it really isn't an option, because it's gravity flow, so it, you would have to lower a huge section of it going through there in order to, to move it, which is part of that one point two million dollar real cycle. So, there, there would be communications, there would be power. So, we took all this information, gathered it, found the depths. Then we took it to you, to the utility department, and we asked Ryan, what coverages do you need? What are we able to do if we were to try to drop this down? That sanitary shallow is three foot deep. So, we can't have that freeze up, so utilities needs that three foot of range in order to maintain anything, washout, freezing of that sanitary. So, that sanitary line kinda has everything at a standstill through there, where we can't go in there and really move any dirt around.
Uh, uh, so, when that was built then, so that, there's no way that was that three foot, cause right now, I measured that one electrical line that's right there by the pole, it's five, it's almost five and a half foot deep. And they, they said that, that was always supposed to be covered by two foot of, so there's three foot of silt that has filled in there. So, you're telling me that, that that line was not put in there correctly then, at the get go?
I don't know, when it was put in, I mean, that was long before me, so I can't answer that, but like I said, we would.
And I wish I had pictures, I wish I would have pictures of this, because when we built there twenty-five years ago, there was literally a ditch there, a ditch, and it was deep. And it filled in over the years.
It's just me, me speaking, I, I don't have any context. Did the rest of it north of that line maybe silted? But since that's the high point, that, that been silted?
To the north was just the opposite. To the north, you used to be able to come in at Chipper Fields and drive right across that into our backyard. Now, if we did, we would put a mini van in the hole, yeah, I mean, it would bury it. So, that's all definitely changed, plus.
So, to address the whole what Ashley's talking about, she's correct. So, what happened there was, and we have proof of this, is that one of those properties was purchased, and somebody raised the level in their backyard and they put a shed in. And so, they raised that ground, which now is causing the washout upstream from there, further to the north. So, what we can do there, and this is what Melissa was trying to get at, was we can go in there and fill that hole in. And I told Melissa, we can, it kinda defeats the purpose, because if we fill the hole in, it's gonna cause more water to go above ground, which is gonna make your problem downstream worse. Do I think that needs filled in? Yes, I think we should go in there and fill that in. But I also think that a little to the south of there, where that was raised up, we should go in there and we can cut that down. Now, is this gonna fix your problem when it, we get a three inch drain? Absolutely not. It'll beautify the area, and it'll flow the way that it should, but it's not going to fix the flooding problem one bit whatsoever. So, it's kinda where we're at from our standpoint, is our hands are tied, there's really nothing we can do in there besides fill that hole in, maybe cut down four to six inches of where that was raised. But as far as going from there to the south, our hands are completely tied because of utilities. And we tried to do everything we could to try to get in there and try to dig. We, we kinda went off the property, we checked opposite directions, um, east, west, to see what we could do, but that flow has to cross over that sanitary line. And that sanitary line is what's dictating everything in there from what.
So, you're telling me that's three foot all the way across the whole south side?
Yeah, we, if we, no, the way it runs.
Cause that ditch right now, when you stand down in the ditch, that ditch is about here, that other stuff is up here.
The way.
So, you can't tell me that that's three foot.
I have all the elevations, I can show you exactly what we did, and I can show you all the numbers. They are all geocoded and all spot on, like a hundred percent perfect, every depth, front of the ground.
So, there is one thing you guys can do, stop building up north, because everybody knows, water, water runs faster on concrete and sod. It used to be all open fields that they had never flooded like this twenty-five years ago. It never did that. Some kid's gonna fall in that and drown.
You should hope it's not right here.
You guys know how fast that water runs through that? Some little kid's gonna be on that sidewalk that's in front of J E O and get swept into there before school or something. This is, this is getting ridiculous.
It's rushing.
You know, you guys keep adding and adding and adding, everybody knows that water runs a lot faster on concrete and roofs.
Joe, appreciate the work you did on that. I mean, last fall, we were trying to find some facts, and we have facts now, and that's what we have to use, so, thank you.
So, just keep presenting to you guys, when the house is flooded, maybe brainstorm bills and things, I guess, is that what we do?
Well, I mean, certainly, if as a part of your, you know, your private endeavor, whether they're engineering or otherwise, you have a different solution. Um, you know, it sounds like something north, but they're not, not in that particular area that J E O hasn't considered. I, I think that's obviously, that would be ripe for a conversation, just to give me a turn speculating, not the policymaker. Um, the problem, I think, right now is there isn't an option C. There was an option A and option B, B's too expensive, A's done, but it's not solving your problem, right? And so, then the question is, what is option C?
Adding to it, quite frankly, is what's. And then where was like the coming on our side of the property, like getting the, there was supposed to be a letter two about like, I know we're not getting.
That was, that would be to get an easement from you so that that work can be done.
Right.
But my presumption is, if that's not gonna fix your problem, why would anybody, you included, want the city to come on your property and start cutting down and shaping back into your property?
The problem there is, it just goes back to that sanitary line, so we went onto property, I'm just gonna be honest, we scooted to the west. We potholed further to the west, like you, of those pine trees where it curves, the problem is, is that line runs parallel, and then it goes back like southwest. So, if we went to the west and we made, and dug drainage ditch on the west side on your property, it still has to cross that sanitary line, because it turns and goes back to the east. So, it still has to jump over the top of it anywhere along there. That's, that's the biggest problem. So, when we looked at all utilities going down, and we looked, looked at the electrical, we looked at, you know, wait, what would it cost if we lowered the electrical? What, what would it cost if we moved communication?
Where does it go back to the east?
The creek.
The creek goes back.
Back underneath the water, the chestnut.
Oh, like, still way further back.
The sewer's here, the creek's gotta come over it to get back underneath the chestnut.
So, the lowest point has to be the far south end. So, just say we drop that five feet to drop three feet by your place, and this has to be lower, we can't even go down two inches, because that sanitary is only three foot deep.
It's already a three foot.
So, that creek has to cross over that to go back that direction. So, that sanitary is literally controlling everything that we could do, even if we were to say, hey, let's just drop the power three feet, let's drop this, this communication line down this far. We cannot do it because of the sanitary. The sanitary is the problem, it's the expensive part to move, you just, it's not as easy as moving anything.
Well, as of right now, it looks like we'll drop the J E O on the dirt pile and what they can do there. I think right now, we're discussing things that we think could be done, but what else ought to happen? Uh, I think, I'm not saying we can't use public time, but I think we need to, uh, meet with property owners, council, Joe, and sit down, same table, and talk about it. And I don't know how soon we can schedule a meeting, cause we've got a lot of other stuff going on, we'll probably talk in six weeks, two, a month, two months, up there.
It's just getting to be the rainy season and Tuesday, date nights every other week down here, I guess, I don't know.
Okay, thank you. Okay, other members of the audience that have a statement?
Hi, I'm, uh, I'm Zach Mulca, I'm a pretty new resident of Wahoo, so thanks for letting me come talk today. Um, I wanted to ask if the city council would consider amending the ordinances that prevent residents from having chickens in residential lots. Uh, I know Omaha and I can both have permit systems that you can go through to facilitate that, and I just think it would be nice if the council would consider something like that.
Can I get the spelling of your name, please?
Yeah, it's H O N, O L, K A.
We are aware of the presentation, uh, we do have a committee that's in, that's in their jurisdiction, and, uh, we have reviewed it a little bit, not official, so, uh.
This is my first meeting, so I didn't know that, thank you.
No, this brought up at the last meeting.
Pardon, that's all, thanks, guys.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any other subjects in the public? Okay, we will move on. Um, the department head reports, fire department.
Good evening, council, uh, Cody Hall, on Fire Department, Wahoo City, Wahoo. Um, just gonna kinda give you a brief overview on twenty twenty-four, uh, some of the projects we're working on, um, some additional cost savings I've been looking at these, so. Uh, twenty twenty-four was a pretty busy year, I'll give you EMS numbers as well, uh, we had six hundred and four EMS runs, uh, and then fire EMS combined was a hundred and twenty-four runs, so we continue to increase some call numbers, uh, for calls and, and calls for service. So, um, it's kinda going pains with the, with the town that's growing, so, uh, I think it's important to note, well, we averaged four point six nine personnel per call, so roughly four and a half persons per, per run, uh, which is pretty outstanding. There's towns that, you know, can't muster up a person or two to respond, so, very healthy as far as responders are concerned. Uh, currently, we have thirty-three firefighters on staff, um, are volunteered. Uh, of those thirty-three, I have four who's, uh, become certified firefighter long this last year, which is a big thing, that's about six months of courses, uh, coursework that they do through the state of Nebraska. And that plays into some of the stats here a little bit, uh, but a very good number, I think total, we have fifteen, fourteen of those thirty-three, so roughly half are certified firefighters on the state of Nebraska. We'll get into this next one too much, it's kinda Grant's, uh, mantra, is six of those thirty-three firefighters are in E M T cap class right now, which I believe, and he'll speak of in his reports in the future, uh, that's the most we've ever had in E M T course, uh, to our knowledge, so that's, that's also a good thing. So, that's E M T level B, or E M T. So that's E M T level B or E M T B, so not paramedics, but, but just below that, so. Uh, some of the projects we're working on, um, we'll continue to, to work on our training tower. Uh, we kind of slowed down, but we do have dirt work done at the, uh, sanitary sewer, uh, water treatment facility, uh, you know, streets department has, you know, been helping us out with that. Got the grade done down there. I, I might have to bring in a couple more loads to raise that up. Above floodplain, uh, but we're gonna continue to move forward with building a training center now, uh, down there. Um, other projects that we're working on, obviously the engine, uh, which is in your, uh, uh, I believe your bills portion of the month. Um, you'll see that come through. So for the chassis, we're at three hundred and ninety one thousand, six hundred and seventy six. Why is that in, in the bills right now? Uh, if we pay for chassis, um, upon delivery to the factory, uh, we save sixteen around, just, just right at sixteen thousand dollars in savings. Uh, to, to prepay the chassis. So, um, I recommend Melissa and she's recommending to me that we take, take advantage of those costs. Still slide for, for probably, uh, late fall, early, uh, early winter as far as delivery of that, that unit to the department. You know, we kind of had the mercy of, of materials and influence, so everything that I've been told is, we are still on schedule for that. Uh, some other things working on, we did qualify for a share cost grant through N S D F A for bunker gear. So, uh, the way this works is if I send a firefighter in for fifth duty test. And they're within two years of their start date, so newbies, um, they will reimburse, uh, reimburse us, uh, up to probably three thousand dollars for bunker gear. So I did have, uh, I did have those members fitted. They were due. So we're gonna get, uh, a set of bunker gear that we, um, purchased for each firefighter is roughly about six thousand. That's coat, boots, pants, helmet. Uh, everything they need to structure a firefight. Um, so we submitted, uh, bill for that is, is looking at twenty four thousand, but we're going to get fourteen thousand back in savings. So essentially I'm getting an extra three sets of gear, uh, for free through that grant. So, um, and that, that continues to be in every ten year thing. We have the spotlight here, so. Big savings there, um, that my guys were able to grab. Um, radio grant, uh, we did receive, uh, the radio grant for the county. There'll be some M R Ms that go out here in the future. We'll get some, some stuff ironed out that obviously will, assuming the stuff that we'll have to enter into. Uh, but we're gonna get fourteen radios in that grant and that was part of that, uh, that Don Bacon grant, uh, um, I know there's another work for it, but, uh, that's, that's a pretty good cost savings to the city and we're already sitting pretty well as far as radios from the new system that, that will go in. I believe they're on track. Uh, still for, for late fall. I know they're, they're planning to hopefully do some testing late summer on that system. So we'll be ready to go as, as, you know, as they flip the switch. Uh, additional grant funding that we got for the state radio system, we received two portable radios and two, uh, they call battle boxes. It's a box about the size of the top of this podium. Uh, that has a radio in it, uh, the repeater that we can take anywhere, uh, and that will connect to the state's radio system. Uh, we did receive that at no cost through, um, some state funding. So. More savings there. And lastly, uh, this last year we did an I S O recertification or re-rating. Uh, currently the city Waho sits at a five, five Y for the I S O. I S O, if anyone is familiar with that, that's how they set their insurance rates as far as fire protection is concerned. Um, and I will let you know, uh, with the additions of some equipment and training from the department, specifically the ladder, uh, that will decrease what our, our score is, which is good. The more the number, the better. So I'm looking, holding it at three. When you get three or four, that's better than five. So that, that will, uh, help out as far as insurance premiums are concerned. That's all I have unless any of you have any questions for me.
Keep doing the great job, Joe. Thanks for having me. Good report.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, Steve.
Joe Nguyen, Waho Street Superintendent. Uh, first off, I'd like to introduce, um, Todd Lurkelson. Um, we hired him as our assistant, new assistant. He's a street superintendent. Uh, he's been with the city Waho for two years and he brings a wealth of experience on heavy machinery and. Vehicle maintenance to our team, brings a lot of leadership, um, a lot of public engagement. He's always out in the field and he's kind of like the last guy that left us to go be a G I S tech. Jason is just very, very active. And so that's what we need. I feel like in our community, we just need. Good, solid staff that will engage with the public and educate them on what we're trying to do and how we're doing it and just be engaged. So welcome Todd to our team. So, already part of the team, but just moving on up. Uh, we currently have two equipment operator positions open. Um, we have ten interviews scheduled for Thursday and Friday this week. I'm just itching to get those filled. So we can get out there and start going potholes faster and getting the streets swept a little bit faster. Um, we're down to employees right now, so. Staff of seven, two's a lot, but we've got a lot of good candidates. Um, Melissa reached, we kind of extended our, our search for applicants on social media and it kind of paid off. So. Kind of excited to get these interviews out there. Uh, planned projects, intersection at Fifth and Walnut is scheduled this spring to have some panel curb and gutter replacement, A D A ramps. That's on the, um, the west side of the courthouse. Back to the north. Um, we're gonna do some brickwork there, kind of like we did down below and kind of just revamp that area. There's a little speed bump there, so. That's, that was on the, our one in six year plan, um, planning to get it done last fall. Didn't happen. So that's first on the list this spring. Um, pothole street sweeping has already started. It's been a rough winter on our roads with the potholes. When the temps go up and down, we get freeze and refeed freeze, which causes, causes those potholes to pop. Um, we want the public to know that our approach is gonna be more proactive on trying to repair the streets and fix them the right way. So you might see areas in town where we're gonna hit the driving surface. Vehicles, but if it's like in the curb and gutter, our ultimate goal is to be able to come in and put in hot asphalt and fix those that are just. Put cold patch out there. The cold patch is about three times as much as a hot asphalt costs. So if somebody sees that, just again, we're trying to repair those the right way instead of just patching them up. Um, alley inspection and repairs after winter and in the spring when we get heavy rains in the winter, um, the alleys get pretty beat up. Just want the public to know that we have a plan to go in, once we get kind of potholes out of the way, to go in and inspect all the alleys and kind of. Focus on them, kind of focus a little more time on our alley. And I know we got a lot of, get a lot of complaints on the alleys just because a lot of people use them for direct access to their gratties and stuff. So. We're really this year gonna try to focus on cleaning those up a little bit. Um, storm sewer work, Johnson Service Services has been in town working on inspection and clean, cleaning of our storm system. Once completed, J E O will be conducting an evaluation of our storm drainage system. This evaluation includes hydrology reports and recommendations for future improvements. Um, they've been in town, but the weather kind of put them back. Um, I need to follow up with them this week and see exactly where they're at and if they're continuing to work. That's kind of taken place, uh, north of twelve street in that area and then also down around Hackberry Park with all of those alpines out there.
North and east, right?
Yeah, northeast. By your house. So I did something a little different this year. I really wanted the council and the public to understand. What goes into our storm maintenance when we do, when we take care of winter storms? So this isn't all of our storms that we, we responded to this year, but I kind of took three different storms and kind of put them together. One thing we're trying to do is track our man hours, our salt usage, our fuel. I really wanna just get this all put together so we can. Kind of just pinpoint our budget and know, get, let the public know what it cost us to run one. So the first one on here that you see was a major event. It was that first ice storm we had in December, um, the thirteenth and the fourteenth. Kind of gives you a rundown and at the end it gives you a total cost of what that storm cost us as taxpayers. So that one storm, we put salt down on basically every road in town. Um, some areas more than others, but that cost us about six grand. And that was strictly ice. Um, the next one, it's a minor event. It was kind of one where. I would consider these, we're not gonna cancel school. We're still gonna report, but the roads are still kind of slick. Um, to go out and basically hit our emergency routes and around the schools and stuff, that was about a thousand dollar event. You can kind of look at the hours. That the crew worked and kind of just gives you a rundown of what we did. We look at those two and there's a lot that goes into those. We want the public to understand that, um, say it's gonna snow Saturday, but it's gonna be fifty two. Do we really wanna go out and put seven thousand dollars in salt down and, and send a crews out when we might have a three hour period and everything's gonna start to deteriorate and melt? So when I make that call, there's gonna come a time. We hope that this helps the public understand why we're doing what we're doing. Our biggest concern is safety and your head is tactical. So just hope, hope that this paints a picture going forward. Um, cemetery report, cemetery cleanup was slow due to winter weather. Um, this is gonna be something that I feel like every year in the spring, we're gonna kind of have to. Bounce around. Um, we're prepared to do so, but with the committee and everything that we put together, we really want the public to be able to go out there and decorate and do the things that. They wanna do with the holidays and stuff that are coming up. That's why we kind of have that early March, one through ten days. That way we can get in there. Um, we were able to get everything picked up before the snowstorm and we even started mowing and trimming some trees out there. Uh, the cemetery supervisor position is still open as of now. Um, we have somebody in our sights and hope to make an offer soon. Pretty excited for this. Um, we put a lot of heart and effort into. Really trying to find the right person for that job. Um, it was difficult, but I, I think that we found that person. So hopefully this week we can. Move in the right direction with that. Um, we had a coffee with the chamber event last week to talk about the new cemetery committee and the policies. It was a great turnout with lots of positive engagement from the public and city staff. Um, I really wanna thank everybody that's been involved with that. Uh, it was, it's been a tough process, but. It's probably one of the most beautiful things I feel like could have happened to our community. The engagement from the public, the engagement from the council, um, the, the extra, added extra community members. Committee members that came on from the public have been wonderful. And I feel like without that interaction, without that engagement, we wouldn't have reached where we're at. Um, during this cleanup, we figured we would have some speed bumps and concerns or calls and we had zero. So I was really impressed with that. That kind of tells me that we, that we're doing the right thing and it kind of supports. What we're doing. And I, I think there are some questions and stuff that the committee are gonna be faced with coming up, which I think is the best part about this is we can circle back and we can look at policies and. We can look at areas where we can bend and there we can look at things that benefit the taxpayer and what they want out of the cemetery. So. Just, it's been wonderful. So I appreciate you guys that are on that community and the public. So other than that, that's about all I have.
When you have a snow event and it's winter, we know you have a snow event and we know it's expensive, how, how do you budget? So when you're setting your budget for twenty twenty five, do you try to, in your mind, go through an average of six snow events or how do you handle it?
We, so when I first started, I really didn't have any of that information. Um, that's what we're trying to do now. This is a lot for us too, is to try to put all this together because every single storm is different. We haven't ran into a spot where we've been, we're under budgeted, which apply Melissa for that because. Salt is expensive. That's probably the most, and then equipment. And so I see in the near future, I mean, we need to continue to talk about newer plow equipment because we put a lot of maintenance into our equipment. Problem is, is it's, it's a big chunk money. You're talking three, four hundred thousand dollars for a brand new truck. We're trying to push that, but as far as budget goes for material, um, we do have a salt shed in the budget. We're trying to find a place to put that. Um, and then I think there it's basically, it's a stockpile and, you know, we're gonna spend this much on salt. And if we have a good year and we don't use as much, our pile goes up. And then the next year, same thing. If salt prices drop, we can buy it off peak. You can see here, we buy it off peak for fifty three, sixty one a ton. Um, one can then holds about fourteen ton of salt. Now, every event is different. So there's some events, you can look here where we went through twelve tons and then during the ice event, we went through. Um, seventy six tons in two days. So we would much rather have a foot of snow on the ground than.
I've got the choice.
An inch, yeah, an quarter inch, by, because that's the problem. That's the wear and tear on your vehicles. That's what, that's what's, but the goal with this is to get all this wrapped up so we can better understand where our budget should be for, so. Mo Huh Public does a very good job of sending kids to school. So we base a lot of that off of, hey, they're having school today. We need to get out there. If school's canceled, it makes it a lot easier for us because then at least we have that comfort zone of knowing that. We can get out there, do what we need to do, but when school's in session, we kind of have to get it and get out there.
That's what I compliment you on your work with the, uh, committee. Um, I think it's noticeable. I think it was, uh, I, I think you listened. And applied so much of what was brought up and I think it, uh, I think we're going in the right direction for sure.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So, nice job.
That was just the chamber coffee. You can just tell there's a collaborative feel with it and a sense of committee, you know, community with it. So, yeah.
I think sometimes it's hard to get volunteers to fill in some of the committees.
I'm very excited.
Fill in readily, you know, and, and they had a lot of good influence.
Yeah, when I took, took this job over, I'll be honest with you, nothing about cemetery. And I learned in that first year and a half that. The community, their heart and soul are in our cemetery. It's like they, but the communication wasn't there. You know, a lot of people just don't come out safe. It's kind of their, their safe place. It's where they go. They have family there and they have loved ones there. Um, this has been great. And I mean, uh, it's just gonna grow and it's gonna continue to get better because we have engagement. We have people that are listening. We have a lot of new ideas. Um, and right now is the perfect time because our cemetery is growing. There's a lot of new technologies out there. Um, and again, the public, the, the public's engaged and I don't feel that you can move forward if they're not engaged the way they are. So. Without them, we, we wouldn't be where we're at. So I really appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, you were waiting for some information that you didn't get.
Right, the report on Lomer Ridge street paving. I've put this on here in anticipation of the report, which has not been, is not yet available. So. I won't have anything on one of the street.
Okay, um, consent agenda. Pretty much routine items, so.
We got our fire engine chassis down there and then again, what? We got another number for fire engine.
So you remember that the second half of that is the arcaphons are paying for a portion of that, right? So, uh, we're, we're expending that out with the purchase of the chassis instead of later on, which is why you see this split.
So it's split, it's on the bulk debt. So I thought, okay, arcaphons, we've had them under our control and now we're spending.
Yes, and the other is coming out of the fire department. Fire firm specifically.
The vehicle fund. So the line we did put aside for the.
So there'll be some love. Are we what, halfway through that, for, for cost of that thing?
Yeah, I didn't include in the report. I can do that. Right, we, right, we have been actually, because of the interest we've earned on the manners money. Because of the interest we've earned on the C D investment that we have that came to a dollar amount that we are actually going to have to. Use the public safety bonds for to fund the back, the last portion of the, it's actually decreasing. So we're headed in the right direction.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll say it.
Motion to approve, we made the comments, roll call.
Cretin?
Yes.
Rappel?
Yes.
Naimo?
Yes.
Agius?
Yes.
Yes.
No public hearings, the first item, uh, not requiring a public hearing, approval of contracts for spraying the. Approval of contracts for spraying mosquito to various municipalities and authority to allow the mayor to sign these agreements. They all been worked out. Probably the most similar to the last.
Yeah, it's the, it's the same as the last couple of years. Um, the only thing that's changing is the date and the dollar amount. I reached out to Joe and he let me know, uh, what he expected to be an appropriate cost for all of them. Uh, in previous years, we've had the slightly smaller municipalities maybe be at a different rate, but with travel and cost of product and whatnot, we're, everybody's going to be at the same rate for application. Um, so, and there is a sample I used, uh, I just grabbed the first one and then, um, that other filing, mosquito spraying, that is the, um, entities that have said that they want us to spray for them this year.
I want the public to understand, I want the council to, we do this as a service. We don't technically make any money off this. Through the state, we're able to spray other communities, but it's basically at the cost of our labor and material. So we're not charging a fee to spray. We are actually doing this kind of a public service, I should say.
Well, it's got the, I was looking for that indemnification paragraph, so I'll see that in there.
And so it's kind of a fit in while we can. Um, the way the, I would say the only good thing that comes out of this is that we have to spray off schedule hours. So our staff is scheduled from seven to three thirty. So when we do spray other communities, our guys are paid overtime, which is, reflects the price. I think that's the only kickback that the city would get is you're giving your employees some overtime based off of their working. So.
I'll make motion to approve the contract for the mosquito spraying for the various municipalities.
Motion. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Rappel?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Creachy?
Yes.
Sweet?
Yes.
Nagel?
Yes.
Number two, approval of labor, honor of labor for public buildings. Uh, Wahoo Public Buildings and Grounds Association for a year ending twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-four.
So for, just for, I guess for the interest of the public, Wahoo Public Building and Grounds Association is kind of a property holding company for the city of Wahoo. Uh, the information that's included on the financials shows the amount of money that's owed for the various project that, that this organization has taken on, um, as well as showing the rent revenue that comes in from the city. So if there's any questions on this, I can certainly answer them. As you'll see, it is tied to the bank statement. So confirmation that um, I guess what we say we have, we actually have. This is something that we have done annually. This needs to be submitted to the uh, state auditors, what's, to state auditor's office and the Wahoo Public Building and Grounds Association is listed as a component unit on the city's audited financial statements. So that they are looking for this on an annual basis as well and review it. So.
So we're listed, do they do any audit of it or look at it?
Yeah, they do because once we, once you approve it and I submit it into the state, they do a review and they send me a letter letting me know that it has been accepted. Uh, there's never been the state auditor's office does, yes.
I mean, our own auditors don't spend much time on this one. I think they
No, they will ask them the real questions, right? And they'll ask to see the audit waiver, but they don't typically spend a lot of time on this.
My first straight word, so. I would approve the audit waiver. We don't need an audit, we can work out this case. And if the public has questions, that's where it's nice to have this. They don't publicly motion approved.
Second. Motion, second, and questions, comments? Roll call.
Creachy?
Yes.
Nagel?
Yes.
Sweet?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Rappel?
Yes.
Number three, approval of job descriptions and any scale changes in the street department and city office positions.
So included in the package is a description, a summary of the changes for street and cemetery. I have two job descriptions on the city offices side that have, yet have a few details worked out. So they're not included. Um, some of the major changes that, they're not major, changes that we made. Equipment operator does not require CDL, excuse me, equipment operator two does not require CDL. Equipment operator one does. Um, we added some language about knowledge and awareness of the MUTCD principles of basic traffic management. There's some references to, uh, use of GIS software, which is something that is kind of an expected understanding now. Um, some of the job descriptions had more changes than others, simply because for this, for this example, the assistant street superintendent that was updated uh, a, a couple of years ago and the others are a little more outstanding. So as far as the job description changes, they're essentially really to make them in line with what they're doing. Also while elevating the street department and the expectations that we have of that department from construction standpoint, from a management standpoint of our city assets. So um, we do have, I guess, one note that we've added is a street superintendent position. Um, we've added in there that they must have or be able to acquire the street superintendent license from the state of Nebraska within two years of hire. So I guess if there's any questions on these, I'd answer them. I think I would prefer to have this be a separate action item from the, um, se, uh, pay scale adjustments that I want to discuss with you further. So.
I'll make a motion to approve the job description change.
For this, street department?
Right.
Discussion? Roll call.
Rappel?
Yes.
Creachy?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Nagel?
Yes.
Sweet?
Yes.
So as we're doing this, um, and through conversations that I've had with Joe, uh, the desire to sort of elevate, uh, and have greater expectations of the street department, there's been some conversation about wages associated with these positions. Um, we are moving forward with an official professional salary survey. That's one of the reasons why we've been adjusting the job descriptions. But considering the fact that, uh, we've had three open positions, including the cemetery supervisor position within the street department, I feel, I feel like there's more turnover in that department than, than maybe what we should be having. Um, I decided to take a look at our, uh, the Nebraska pay surveys, which is an informal salary survey that's done by the league of Nebraska municipalities and pulled the data from some comparable, um, communities. So Ashland, Aurora, Auburn, Blair, Crete, Bay City, Bearberry, Raska City, Skyler, Stewart, Lane, and York. And what I found was that overall, our pay scale for the street department is lower than what our peer communities are. And so in order to, I, I know we have this salary survey coming up, but I feel like this is something that we need to do before we actually get to that point in June or July, whenever we come forward with those salary, uh, survey results. I am confident that through that salary survey that we have done, we will find that we are in fact low in this department. And so I, through my evaluation and I had some conversations with the street committee a little bit about this, um, a six percent raise across the board for the street department is, is my recommendation. It puts us um, in line with our peer communities. Um, it will, when that professional salary survey comes back, it does mean that more than likely those salary adjustments for that department will be less, will be smaller because we've already made this adjustment. Um, it also puts the street superintendent position a little closer in line with what our power plant supervisor, our water wastewater supervisor, line crew, and natural gas supervisor are making. Um, currently there's about a between a three and five dollar an hour pay difference in starting pay, um, currently the way it sits. And so this will get us a little bit closer to that, um, parity with those departments. So. Total cost for this year of doing this is roughly fifteen thousand dollars, but I will want, I think you pointed out that we have had some open positions. So there's been savings in salary and in wages.
For this year.
For this year, right, right. So. Any other, any questions?
So two grounds, the bottom ground.
Right, the bottom one is the one, the top one, the top one really takes the data that I collected from the peer communities and says, it says like the cemetery supervisor position is a discrepancy of, what is that? I can't read that. Six point eight, eight point, right? I think generally across the board, because we know we're doing this professional salary survey later on this year, that a six percent across the board uh, makes the most sense. It's, um, it's not diving into each specific job description like the salary survey will, will be doing at the spring. And I, I, again, I think this goes along with some of the comments that, that you made with Joe, so that the effort is to get folks to understand that this is, this is a professional job that these individuals hold. They're, they need to, there's a level of respect. But along with that comes a level of expectation that they're going to not just fill potholes and moress, right? They, there is there, and you've seen the results of that. Some of the professional work that they're doing in terms of pouring concrete, taking on the street superintendent role, working with the cemetery committee, all these things are raising the bar as far as that program goes. And so I think this is, it's appropriate.
I mean, I, I know the problem with the pay scale, it also reflects the management. You know what you expect and you get that.
We, we really want to just, again, it's, we have a wonderful team right now. And the first thing was, was just to be able to stay competitive with the communities and with the CDL around us. I mean, there's guys that can go grab a trash truck for thirty-two dollars an hour. The state right now is giving, um, longevity pay. If you've been there ten years, you get six dollars an hour extra overnight when you're falling snow. On top of it, their pay scale is much higher than ours. I'm trying to retain my guys from going to the state. I'm trying to retain my guys from going and grabbing the trash truck. Then what else do they bring to the table? We want to, we're, we don't want, we're going to fix the streets. We're going to replace asphalt. We're going to replace concrete. Another example, um, we're fixing some brakes on a plow truck. We take it to Lincoln, it goes to a, uh, a shop in Lincoln, that bill's thirty-eight hundred dollars. We just did it in-house in a day and a half for eight hundred bucks. So in order to keep our young talent and worry about our future, we need to try to retain these employees because taking a little cash out there, two hundred dollars an hour, two hundred fifty dollars an hour to work on those vehicles, we're doing it in-house. I mean, Todd, he came from Bellevue Schools. He worked on school buses his whole career. These guys know how to fix anything. And what they don't know how to do, they are willing to learn how to do it. And that's a that right there is so valuable to the community that we, we want to grow that where if you've got a kid, a, a son at home or a daughter that doesn't want to go to college, we really want them to look at these jobs and, and understand that you can make a great career out of working for the city, whether it's parks, whether it's streets, like these positions are valuable to the community. If they fail and we don't have people to fill them, we're in trouble. Our community's going to fail and we, we want to fix that. We've got a great team and we're just going to continue to do our best. But this helps, this, this really gives them that feeling that they're valued by their community. So we appreciate you guys considering it.
I think, uh, well, I know that you've done a great job in changing the culture of that department. And you probably had some turnovers because of people that, what we didn't do was what you're for, that type of thing. But, uh, but I think this, we're here will reward those in state and, uh, I think it's a good move. Motion for the first, please. Any questions? Roll call.
Creachy?
Yes.
Sweet?
Yes.
Rappel?
Yes.
Nagel?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Okay. Mayor's comments, um, greater Wahoo met, uh, today, Tuesday noon, um, because of the weather last week and then also, uh, Ash Wednesday. So usually our council meeting is after that meeting. Uh, so today, uh, we met at noon and we talked about meeting tonight. Uh, some of the questions that we had, um, in their minds and in ours is the progress of the board dorm on college campus. And also, um, the project, I guess we call it the grocery store project, we want to see questions about that. Uh, we didn't get too deep into the woods, but, uh, most people know that it's grown on. And, uh, so not a lot of questions, just some comments of what we're having on that, but it's still going to happen. So. That was primarily, uh, the discussion. Were they still very, very, anything else?
Well, Sen made a very nice presentation.
Yeah.
And it sounds like, you know, that, that person that's in charge of it now has some energy, has some ideas. I think there's going to be some future meetings. There, there's a lot at their disposal, what they can do to help towns with grants and competitive projects. So it was very interesting to hear.
And our representative from Saunders County on that board is Bill Reese.
Yeah, we, we have a membership we pay there.
Yeah.
So it's nice to see everybody's being shut, I think.
Mayor, just one comment on that. Um, I live right there, uh, and at some point in time, I, I really probably will, but a traffic study coming needs to be done at that intersection. With increased traffic coming from the north, they don't stop at 12th, even Locust. Um, you know, kids playing at the basketball court uh, crossing that area there with that increased traffic from the housing being developed just might want to look at a traffic study at that intersection. Whether it's four-way or at least in our south side.
Another thing I noticed in, uh, in you, uh, in that board, uh, maybe you will see him, I just have one copy, but uh, all the trees that were being trimmed up there.
I said, we have that physical therapy. I thought he wanted to keep those trees. He's got one on him.
At one time he was very concerned about the alberdom and
Glad you're coming.
Yeah. We're a bunch of up right now, but.
Yeah, I was sure your company's here. I didn't know that.
Is there any other comments of the council? Not, I don't have any motion to the jury. Salute.
Correct.
Correct.